Welcome to Dover's 2014 Special Town Meeting. While you are getting to your seat, a few preliminaries. The Fire Chief reminds us that there is no smoking in the building and no sitting in the aisles or on the stairs. Please turn off your cellphones and other devices so that we can fully concentrate on the business at hand. A few years ago, we had problems with our PA system because of the interaction with cellphones. Please either turn your cellphone off or place it into airplane mode so that we won't have the interference. Throughout the auditorium tonight and as you entered the building, you saw twenty or so residents with name tags and orange bibs on. These individuals have been designated by the town clerk to help ensure the smooth running of tonight's meeting. They wear many hats: checkers, counters, registrars, constables, etc. I have asked the town clerk to give each worker an orange bib to wear so there will be obvious to everyone in the room who should be in the aisles during a standing count and who should not. As the evening progresses, please follow their instructions and give them your attention as they assist in counting votes. We thank you all for your willingness to work tonight. In addition, the following Dover Boy Scouts are serving as pages: Andre Fiori, Jack Ringel, and Varan Jayanti. These pages will be responsible for bringing a microphone to anyone in the audience who has been recognized by the moderator. Non-voters and non-residents are welcome to attend our town meeting, but to ensure that they are not involved in the counting, I have asked the registrars to give visitors a name tag indicating their non-voting status. They should be seated in the area designated to my left or in the designated area in the annex. Our guests tonight include our state representative Denise Garlick. Denise, thank you for your service to the town of Dover. As a reminder, you must be recognized by the moderator before speaking. Please raise your hand and I will try to scan the audience so that various locations are equally recognized. The lights may hamper my ability to see in the rear of the auditorium, but I will try and please wave your hands vigorously if you're in the back of the hall. We are being televised live tonight by Comcast and Verizon, and the meeting is also being taped by the town. If you are recognized to speak, please either proceed to a microphone or wait for a page to bring one to you. Please identify yourself as well as your street address. Hold the mic close to your mouth and speak directly into it. The power switch will already be on. Some introductions. I am Jim Repetti, the moderator of the town of Dover, and in that role I will oversee tonight's proceedings. On your left, whoop, on your right, my left, who's on first? We have the warrant committee, James Stewart, the chair, Douglas Lawrence, Rich Forte, Brooke Gernert, Rodney Peterson, Jeffrey Merrill, and John Combe. On my right, your left, we have Town Council William Leahy, Assistant Town Moderator David Havlin, Town Clerk Felicia Hoffman, Chair of the Board of Selectmen Carol Lisbon, Member of the Board of Selectmen Jim Dolly, Member of the Board of Selectmen Robin Hunter, and David Ramsey, our Town Administrator. A few words on procedure and tradition. We conduct our meeting according to a tradition peculiar to the New England Town Meeting that has evolved through a combination of custom, statute, and judicial interpretation. The guide that we use is a volume called Town Meeting Time. It's compiled and updated by a committee of the Massachusetts Moderators Association. This volume is somewhat similar to Robert's Rules, but varies from that strict guide for parliamentary bodies in many significant ways as a result of state statutes, judicial interpretations, and tradition. As a result, although Robert's Rules is a useful reference, it does not govern our meeting. Our tradition does embody numerous "thou shalt" and "thou shalt nots," but much is left to local custom and the moderator's discretion. At the end of the day, whether you have won or lost on a particular issue, it is very important that you feel that the process has been fair and consistent with our tradition. Important because this is really the glue that holds this most democratic form of governance together. It is a fragile thing, this town meeting tradition. Too many rules and it will become a game that only lawyers can play. Too loose and it becomes anarchy. I would like to provide a brief explanation of some common town meeting terms and bylaws. This has been received well in the past, so tonight I will do so again. The main motion. The main motion is what is stated by the warrant committee at the beginning of the consideration of an article or by a citizen in the case of an article sponsored by a citizen. Most motions require a majority vote to pass, but some need a two-thirds vote, as the one that we will be considering tonight will require a two-thirds vote. I will let you know before each vote is taken what the requisite vote requirement is. In addition to the main motion, we have something that's referred to as an amendment to the main motion. An amendment to the main motion must be discussed and voted on before returning to the main motion. A majority vote is required to amend a main motion. If a voter desires to amend a motion, I will require that the amendment be placed in writing and delivered to the podium at the time it is put on the floor. This is to enable the town clerk to make sure that we have an accurate copy of the amendment. Move the question. This motion is often yelled out by a bored, frustrated town meeting attendee who just wants to get on with a vote on a particular article. I will not recognize that motion or any other for that matter which is yelled out. You must first be recognized by the moderator, and the motion must then be seconded. At that point, there is no debate allowed on a motion to move the question, and we will move immediately on the motion to move the question. The motion to move the question requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Assuming that motion passes, the meeting will move directly to the vote on the motion which was previously before it. There will be no more debate on the main motion. A motion to reconsider. Dover's bylaws state that if a reconsideration motion is made within thirty minutes of the vote on a motion to be reconsidered, only a majority is required to pass the motion to reconsider. Otherwise, this motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. A lesson learned from those with experience with reconsideration motions. Do not leave the town meeting until it has adjourned. Your favorite article is always at risk for reconsideration. Motion to dissolve. Finally, a motion to dissolve takes privilege over all other motions, is not debatable, and requires a majority vote. Normally, we use voice votes, and this is consistent with the tradition of town meeting being an open process. If we have a voice vote and seven or more voters immediately question the moderator's call on the voice vote, I am required to ask for a standing count. Because Article I requires a two-thirds vote and approval at a town election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, is also required, I have decided that we will not have a voice vote on the acquisition of the Snyder property. Instead, we will proceed directly to a standing vote. This way, all will know what the exact count of voters were, pro and con. Hopefully, I have not confused you with this quick review. I am here to help you accomplish within certain parameters the serious business of the town. If you are confused, please ask for clarification. Are there any questions about what I've covered so far? Before each article, I will state the subject matter of the article and then recognize a member of the warrant committee to make a motion on that article. The full text of each of these articles is printed in the Blue Book, and the warrant committee has distributed a summary of their position on the articles. A word about brevity. Tonight, I will require that presenters of articles limit their presentation to no more than ten minutes. During the discussion of these articles, I will try to maintain a balance between moving the agenda along and ensuring that all who have something to contribute have the opportunity. We have a lot to cover tonight. I encourage brevity and remind speakers that the longer and more complex your presentation, the greater the chance that you will confuse rather than persuade. Hopefully, all who wish to will have the opportunity to speak, and we will reach a vote without someone having to move the question out of boredom or frustration. It would also be nice if we can avoid continuing this meeting to tomorrow evening. A couple more reminders. When I am conducting a standing count, it is very important that you remain at your seat, either sitting or standing while the vote is being counted. I will let you know when it is time to sit down or stand up to be counted. Do not move around the hall during the counting procedure. I will have to halt the counting if I see someone not wearing an orange bib in an aisle during a standing count. In order to ensure a correct count, each section of the auditorium is counted by two individuals. Please pay attention to those counters for your section. In a particularly crowded section, like the front center, he or she will be asking each row to sit down after it has been counted. The counters of each section then confer and agree on a number before it is recorded by the supervisor. The supervisors agree on the total count and subsequently bring it to the podium where I double-check the total vote count. I am confident that this procedure ensures a correct vote count. Finally, I ask that all attendees tonight remember that emotions and personalities should be left at the door of town meeting. I will not tolerate emotional outbursts or accusations directed toward individuals or groups. Disagreement is the essence of democracy. This would be a very boring town meeting if we all agreed, but it is imperative that we disagree without being disagreeable. Let us honor the memory of all those who sacrificed to give us this great gift of democracy by conducting ourselves with dignity and respect. Before we proceed to the articles of the warrant, would you please join me in expressing our thanks to the scores of elected and appointed volunteers who comprise our town government as well as the able employees who ensure the smooth running of the town? Summer is traditionally a little less busy time for our volunteers and employees, but I can assure you, it was not slow this summer. We are very fortunate to have a group of such dedicated volunteers and employees, and thank you for your service. There are many positions available for volunteers in our town. Please consult the town's website and click on the Town Info tab. At the Town Info tab, you will find information about volunteering. Alternatively, the Town Air Report has an information card that you can submit. As I mentioned, we are the beneficiaries of a wonderful gift that all those who served our nation have bestowed upon us. Democracy is a wonderful prize that has been preserved through the efforts and sacrifice of millions of our citizens. Let us take a moment to silently thank those who made such sacrifices and to recognize those who are fighting to protect our freedom and putting themselves in harm's way at this very moment in service of our country. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, and may God bless America. Okay, we now move to the motions to be considered at our meeting tonight. The first motion pertains to the conduct of this meeting. It requires that any amendment that would increase an appropriation expressly identify a source to fund that increase. Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following rule be adopted for the conduct of this meeting: Any amendment to a main motion that would increase an appropriation must contain a provision for the source of funds for the increase such that the total amount to be raised and appropriated at the meeting will not be increased.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
And you're the best.
Again, this motion is a majority vote. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now to the main event. Article I pertains to the acquisition of the Snyder property. Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, exercise a first refusal option under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 61A or otherwise, for general municipal purposes on such other terms and conditions as the selectmen may determine. The fee in a parcel of land located at 46 Springdale Avenue, shown on the assessor's maps is parcel 11-049 and containing approximately 27.2 acres of land known as the Snyder property. That $5,550,000 is appropriated for such land acquisition that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $5,550,000 under GL, Chapter 44, Section 7, 3, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by GL, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, amounts required to pay the principal of and the interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote, and that $150,000 of the $5,550,000 appropriated for such land acquisition be transferred to the reserve fund in fiscal year 2015 established pursuant to GL, Chapter 40, Section 6, to replenish funds previously expended in furtherance of such land acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Many towns and committees have studied this proposal all summer and have prepared reports that relate to their findings. I am now going to ask a representative of each board or committee to present their findings to the town. Those boards and committees are the Board of Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Open Space Committee, the Board of Health, and the Warrant Committee. After each report from a town board or committee, you will have an opportunity to raise your hand and to ask the presenter any question about the facts that they have presented. Again, please raise your hand and I will call on you so that you may ask your factual question. Please confine your questions to the facts presented by that board or committee. After the boards present their reports, there will be plenty of time to discuss the wisdom of their recommendations. If I think that your question relates to the board's recommendation rather than to their statement of facts, I will ask you to reserve your question until we start the general discussion, and I assure you, I will then call upon you to ask the question that relates to their recommendations. First, I would like to call on Carol Lisbon, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to present some background information on this matter. Ms. Lisbon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would first like to thank all of you for coming. This is an amazing, amazing turnout for a very important issue. I think we'll have to find some contentious issues to put into our annual Springtown meeting to get this kind of attendance, but it's great to see so many of you here tonight. Thank you very much. I hope you all had a chance to read the executive summary which was sent out on green paper this August to all the households in lieu of the Blue Book. You'll hear a lot more detail tonight. Over the past four months, as Mr. Repetti stated, there has been an amazing amount of work done by well over two dozen committee members that you'll hear from tonight. They've worked all summer, they've done their due diligence, they work together as a committee, and most importantly, and something that I haven't seen much because we haven't had an occasion to see this very often, they've worked together as a team. And many of the committees you'll hear from tonight are statutory in nature. They are governed by specific rules and regulations either from the local level, our own town code, or by state and federal law. And very often, when they do their due diligence, they need to look within their prescribed laws that they work with every day. This situation was a little bit different because we have a lot of issues that we can't answer quite yet, and we asked the committees and boards to think outside the box as well and to work together to look at some of the more general issues, sort of like at 30,000 square feet, uh, 30,000 feet versus at sea level where they usually work. And they did that admirably, and I think you'll find tonight that that kind of outlook will help in whatever decision you choose to make when it's time to vote. Background, please. So just in case you've been away all summer and haven't had a chance to check in on the Green Executive Summary, a quick background. Back on April 4th, a month before our Springtown meeting, the town was notified that the 27.2 acre parcel at 46 Springdale, owned by James Snyder, so we're just calling it Snyder Property, was under a purchase and sale agreement to be acquired by Northland Residential, a developer of housing, and in this case, 40B housing, which would consist of about forty two-bedroom townhouses. Since 24 of those 27 acres, basically the back acreage, was classified as Chapter 61A agricultural land, which resulted in a, which results in a tax exemption while it's under agriculture, we had 120 days to notify the owner because we have right of first refusal by Mass. General Law. So we didn't get started on this until after the town meeting, the first week of May, so we basically had ninety days left to get all this done. Corralled all the boards and committees together, and after everybody did their due diligence, during which time, we really found no problems, meaning there was no issue with the title, there was no issue with the survey, we did two levels environmental assessment, there was no indication of contamination or anything like that. So on July 21st, the Board of Selectmen voted to exercise its right contingent upon two-thirds approval at town meeting and majority approval at town election to acquire the property. Now, the vote that we took on July 21st was not a vote of the board either recommending that we acquired or not recommending to acquire it. We recommended proceeding with this process because, as Mr. Repetti said, this town meeting process has served Dover well, and we felt this issue was important enough that everybody should have the opportunity to have their say by voting in the two occasions. That being said, on August 27th, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, we did take a vote on whether we specifically as a board would recommend acquisition of the property, and that vote was in the affirmative unanimously. Next slide. So to make sure that everybody knows why they're here tonight, this is to decide whether we're going to acquire the property at 46 Springdale for $5.55 million. And if the two-thirds vote does occur tonight, the second item on the agenda is to authorize $25,000 to fund an ad hoc committee to study the best future use of the property. Mrs. Hunter will talk about that in more detail later on in the presentation. So a yes vote to acquire the property requires two-thirds vote tonight, a majority vote on November 4th, Election Day. It will avoid the development of a forty-unit townhouse development, and it will allow the town to decide in the future what the property should be used for. If we vote no tonight, there will be no vote at the November 4th election. Mr. Snyder will be free to sell the property to Northland Residential, and we can expect a forty-plus unit development to be built there over the next several years, and we lose any ability we've had to decide the future of its use. We lose any ability to decide on the destiny of those 27 acres so close to town. One of the questions that has come up in the series of selectmen meetings and open hearings that we've had was about what is 40B? And 40B is basically Chapter 40B of Mass. General Law, which is the state law that promotes affordable housing by allowing a developer to bypass local zoning laws and regulations in order to build affordable housing. In this case, 25% of the units would be affordable. We thought it beneficial for you to get just a quick perspective on where we stand with affordable housing in Dover right now. The Center Street property that you see on the chart in front of you is basically the Dover Farms property next to the cemetery. The Springdale Avenue property is the Meadows property right across the street from the townhouse, which is almost completed. Tisdale was our first 40B development decades ago. County Street is a new 40B development that is just in the process of being planned. I think some final plans have just been approved. So those are the numbers, those are the number of units we have. State law basically says that if a town doesn't have 10% of its housing and is affordable, then 40B developers can still come in. We will never get to 10% because, as you can think with your math, if only 25% of any unit of any development is 40B, the denominator increases faster than the numerator, so we will never get to 10%. A lot of folks have also thought that 40B housing might be the solution to a problem that we've been wrestling with for a while, which is folks that have lived in town for a long time, who would love to stay in this wonderful town, but who would like to get out of their single residence home into more of a condominium-type complex, not only to save all the angst of being a homeowner and taking care of property, but also to downsize. This is not the solution to that problem. These are the 40B qualifications mandated by the state. You can see that the income levels are relatively low. Even if you had an income level that fit into one of these categories, the household asset limit criteria is basically the killer here. Short of probably being second mortgages on your home, anybody that owns a home in Dover where acreage is going for $450,000 to $750,000 an acre will have more asset than the $75,000 which is allowed to be qualified to 40B development. So yes, we do have an issue about affordable housing, not 40B housing. This is not the solution to the affordable housing issue as we've defined it here in Mr. Repetti, that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Candace McCann, Chair of the Conservation Commission, will now present the report of the Conservation Commission. Sure, could I have one of the pages bring a wireless mic down here, please, to the front, to Ms. McCann? She's right up here, right up on my left. Thank you. Right at the bottom, that's right. Come on down.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Repetti. My name is Candace McCann from Conservation Commission, and we would like very much to share with you a few of our ideas about 46 Springdale. I want to say, first of all, a special thanks to Paul McManus. He is our consultant, and he presented a very in-depth ecological assessment of the property at the Board of Selectmen meeting in June. It's on the website if you're interested. It's a very elaborate study. Thank you. To give you some context, I'm sure you all know where 46 Springdale is, but if you look at the map, the intersection is Center Street and Springdale, and so you're looking right in the center of the photo at the very large property of 46 Springdale, the field and the house in the front. Thank you. A picture is worth a thousand words. I'd like to share in this tour a little bit about the aesthetics of the property as well as some of the various features and some of our thoughts on it. This is at the point of the barn, looking back to the fields back behind. What we felt as commissioners was that this particular property represented a real window into the past. Dover has today many houses and many, many woods. What Dover is lacking today is the plenitude of open space and open fields that once characterized this town. So this is a view into- So this is a view into the way Dover used to look. There are some special considerations about the property. There are extensive wetlands on the property, and these wetlands and Spring Brook add to the richness of the diversity for wildlife, and they provide surface water treatment and infiltration to groundwater upstream of public and private supply wells. If you're standing on Springdale and you are looking into the wetland, this is your first view. Moving on up into the wetland, you can see the vastness of it, you can see the beauty of it. And towards the end, you can see we're coming to the edge of the field at the back. This last photo is standing from the field, looking back towards the wetland to give you a sense of this. This is Spring Brook. It's a wildlife corridor. Conservation Commissioners see 46 Springdale as a critical link in a wildlife corridor. The corridor runs from the south end of town through wild woods, through DLCT land, onto the acreage at 46 Springdale, and on across Springdale through the old town wells to the sparsely populated northern section of town where many of the lands are already In contrast, development creates a fragmented landscape, and it can be very harmful to wildlife. In a continuous corridor, wildlife can move through the corridor through varied habitat in the grazing of their young. Many species of birds and mammals cannot survive with just one type of habitat. They may raise their young in a certain kind of coverage, but they need to move their nestlings on out into a different habitat for easier feeding. They can't be successful if they're limited to just one type of habitat. So considering this as a wildlife corridor, a critical link in this corridor is an important There are some other very interesting features. There is a potential sizable vernal pool at the back of the property. Beautiful picture of it here. It's gorgeous. And there are beautiful upland woods as well. Thanks, Bill. Paul's words himself, he wrote, "The most notable ecological feature of the site is the presence of the large open field, which provides a wildlife habitat type that is ecologically unique and important both locally and regionally." And it's important to also say that in spite of the conservation features of this property, there is plenty of land that can be developed. Between the wetlands and up, between the vernal pool, that whole open field area is suitable for development. But this is the issue that brings us to you tonight. What do you want to do to protect this property? To summarize from Conservation Commission, we believe that 46 Springdale represents historical heritage, a critical positioning in relation to surrounding strategically conserved lands, wildlife protection, wetland resources, and drinking water protection. These are just a few of the many, many reasons for supporting Dover's interest in protecting this pivotal property. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. McCann. And thank you for adhering to the 10-minute limit, which is no small task. Are there any questions for clarification from Ms. McCann about her presentation?
Yes.
Yes, gentleman in the front.
I'm just wondering if you have a map that shows those connected corridors so we could visualize that a little more clearly. Okay.
We have lots of information. We're trying to share this so that you have a fuller picture. Dan, thank you. Great question.
Any other questions for Ms. McCann? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rappetti.
Okay, our next speaker will be Jane Remsen, a member of the Dover Planning Board, and she will present the report of the Planning Board.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jane Remsen. I'm a member of the Dover Planning Board. There's actually going to be two parts to my presentation tonight. The first part is the Planning Board's recommendation for acquisition, and the second part will be to my factual report, as Mr. Moderator said before, to show you some of the options from a zoning perspective for the disposition of the property if the town decides to purchase it. So, the Planning Board. If you are like me, when I joined the Planning Board 100 years ago, you may not even know what the Planning Board is or what we do. The Planning Board manages Dover's zoning bylaws, and that is how land in Dover can be divided. And if someone decides they want to develop that land, we oversee the subdivision process, which generally occurs when you put in a new road, and we'll see more about that later, and includes traffic safety. And generally in the Planning Board, over the past few years, we've seen one to two subdivisions come across. We also administer the scenic road bylaw, which is to make sure that stone walls and trees are preserved on designated scenic roads, which is most of the major roads in Dover, including Springdale Ave. We also write and update the master plan, and we do some other things that aren't actually relevant to this discussion. But, the reason I'm telling you all this is because when a 40B comes along, the Planning Board has actually nothing to do with it at all. Land is divided, a road is put in, and parcels are developed with no oversight or input from the Dover Planning Board. So, we are here tonight to decide whether to purchase 46 Springdale, in effect whether to save the parcel from being developed as a 40B. So what is a 40B? As you've heard from Selectwoman Carol Lisbon, the idea behind Mass General Law Chapter 40B is that flexible zoning is allowed when at least 25% of the housing units in a development are designated affordable. And this sounds great, and I believe that more affordable housing is a good goal, but the execution of a 40B in Dover is really, really difficult. The nature of a 40B is that it does not have to comply with a town's local bylaws and regulations, only state laws. Dover bylaws and regulations are more rigorous than state laws because we have unique concerns. We have groundwater, which we depend on for our wells, we have large tracts of open space, which is one of the main reasons people move to Dover, and that ubiquitous term, we have rural character. So, a development through a 40B generally results in much smaller lots and higher density, meaning more houses and more people per acre, and can be closer to wetlands than Dover would normally allow. Therefore, it is the Planning Board's recommendation, which is from a purely planning perspective, that the town acquires 46 Springdale. The Planning Board believes that benefits to the town would include first and foremost, control by the citizens of Dover over how the parcel is used. The town, through various boards, committees, and probably another town meeting, would have discretion over any future development or conservation plans. And second, whether the parcel is kept as open space, which would be decided after the property was acquired, or not, should the property be developed at all. At least that would occur through local zoning bylaws and regulations, which again are more stringent and rigorous than the state laws that a 40B would have to comply with. And as I mentioned before, that includes the scenic road bylaw and the Dover zoning bylaws and regulations, which allow for larger lot size and less density, and of course the Conservation Commission and Board of Health rules and regs. Third, no matter what we decide to do with the property, from a traffic safety perspective, there would be less traffic if we had control over that property. And fourth and finally, both the preservation of the parcel as open space or a more sensitive development of the property are consistent with Dover's master plan objective of the preservation of our rural character. Okay, so moving on to part two. This is the factual part. And forgive me, I'm going to try to juggle my pointer and my mic and my notes. Here is a map of 46 Springdale to get us oriented. If 46 Springdale is acquired, there are many possible uses, only one of which is ordinary real estate development. But one obvious reason to consider possible development would be for the town to make back some or all of the purchase price. So the Board of Selectmen has asked the Planning Board to present to you the possible uses of 46 Springdale strictly from a zoning perspective. So you can see here on this map, Springdale Ave is right there, the existing house and outbuildings are here, there's a perennial stream, I think, right here, and wetlands over here. The 61A parcel, the part for which the town has a right of first refusal, is in the back of the parcel. It's this whole thing right here. That's the field that Candace was showing you the photos of. So any use of the whole parcel or the 61A parcel only depends on access or developing access to an existing road. The whole parcel obviously has access to Springdale Ave, but the 61A parcel does not have any access at all to an existing road. So the question was raised, is there alternative access? So the Planning Board evaluated it, and the answer actually is no, there is not. There are abutting parcels here owned by the Dover Land Conservation Trust and the Army Corps of Engineers, and it actually forms a corridor to the field on the corner of Springdale and Farm Street, but access is not possible here because of wetlands. Therefore, the Planning Board has concluded that Dover must acquire the entire parcel because the 61A parcel alone is not developable or even accessible at all without the front parcel. Okay, having determined that, here's a close-up of the access, sorry, the access on Springdale. You can see from this map that there's a perennial stream on the easterly side, which is on the left, and there's more wetlands on the westerly side, which is on the right. It also shows the Conservation Commission rules regarding the no-touch and the nostructure areas within 25 feet right there and 40 feet respectively, setback from the wetlands. And if you were to put a road in here for a subdivision, according to Dover Town Regulations, these setbacks would actually be doubled. But by the way, none of these setbacks are applicable under a 40B. Okay, so the question is, how many lots could we get out of 46 Springdale? To discuss the potential development of 46 Springdale, we need to make two assumptions. First, that one owner has control of the entire parcel, that is the 61A plus the front parcel with frontage along Springdale. And second, that we use current zoning. Under current zoning, 46 Springdale is in the R1 zoning district, in which a building lot must have at least 150 feet of frontage along a road and a minimum lot dimension of one acre. 46 Springdale totals 27 acres and has 349 feet of frontage on Springdale. And one final caveat, just because a lot meets zoning requirements to become a building lot does not mean that it is actually buildable. We assume that any proposed lots receive the required permits from the Board of Health for septic and water, and from the Conservation Commission regarding wetlands. So, there are two methods of dividing land. The first method is the Approval Not Required process, or ANR process as we refer to it, and the second is the Conventional Subdivision process. The ANR process allows lots to be created on an existing road without going through the normal complex subdivision process. It's quick and easy, there's usually one meeting in front of the Planning Board, it involves no public hearings, and takes just a few weeks. So here is one possible ANR scenario. Two building lots can be created. This would be the one right here with the red dots around it, and this would be two, each with about 175 feet of frontage along Springdale, although it could be more or less as long as each of them had at least 150 feet of frontage. And you can do whatever you want here as long as it involves a maximum of one house on each lot. So the obvious thing to do would be to preserve the existing house and outbuildings on Lot 1. You could put a second house somewhere here on Lot 2. You could do nothing on Lot 2 and just preserve the whole thing as open space. Or you could put a house on Lot 2 and add some conservation restrictions or trail easements or whatever you want in the rest of the property. So the second method of dividing land is the Conventional Subdivision process, in which you make a new road in order to create frontage for additional lots. This process is fairly long and involved. It includes an application to the Planning Board, detailed engineering, public hearings with the butters and townspeople, and it can take up to a year to complete. Dead-end roads, or cul-de-sacs, are actually prohibited by Dover Planning Board regulations. So an applicant must either put in a loop road, you know, like that, or an oxbow, sometimes it's called, that can both enter and exit onto an existing street, or at least prove to the Planning Board that such a road is viable. The Planning Board has concluded that a multi-lot subdivision with a loop road is probably feasible on this property. And there are several scenarios under which it would be possible, but I'm going to present to you sort of two most likely scenarios. The first scenario is a 10-lot subdivision, which depending on how you look at it, is either the worst case or the best case. The Planning Board thinks that a loop road could be built here, this is the blue part, and a maximum of 10 lots can be created that are each at least an acre. There's several obvious disadvantages to this particular configuration. First of all, the loop road encroaches upon the Conservation Commission no disturb zones here. Secondly, this part of the road goes straight through the existing house, which would be a shame to lose. And third, it creates some kind of nasty lots here, lots eight, nine, and 10, which have roads on both sides. Doesn't seem great. So, the Planning Board actually has the ability to grant a waiver for the dead-end road prohibition under certain circumstances, if a loop road is proven to be viable and if a dead-end road is more beneficial to the town. Criteria or factors that the Planning Board considers when granting a waiver like this could include preservation of views from the road, reduced number of developable lots, a granting of conservation easements for pedestrian or trails, pedestrian trail linkage, or other conservation restrictions. And now, coming back for one second to the issue of access, if we look at this previous slide. This is a very tricky issue when you go from the loop road to the dead-end road because the Conservation Commission, if I can speak generally for them, would likely prefer to approve an alternative access, that is, a dead-end road, because it wouldn't encroach on the wetlands. And yet, from a Planning Board perspective, the applicant has to prove that a loop road is viable in order for the Planning Board to grant a waiver and allow a dead end. So if this property were to be developed, this issue would obviously require further discussion and cooperation between the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, but I am confident that the boards can cooperate on that, the alternative being a lawsuit or a 40B. Okay, so if you could go forward, please. Right. So, assuming all of the access issues were sorted out, a more sensitive development, in the Planning Board opinion, would look like this. The Planning Board, it assumes the Planning Board would grant a waiver for the loop road, and it would be allowed to have a dead-end road, which would enable preservation of the existing house right here. You could put seven or less additional lots on this property, sort of depending on what your end game is. And you could add conservation restrictions or easements to maintain the views or trail access, and the wetlands here and here are protected as open space. And it's worth noting that if any of you had seen the $5 million valuation in the appraisal, they assumed this configuration, but actually with a maximum of 10 lots, which is allowed by right, and therefore the highest and best use. So that's it. That's my report on the factual, my factual Planning Board report, if anybody has any questions on that part.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Remsen. Are there any questions? Okay.
Mr. Crowley.
Blinded by the light. Thank you. Mr. Crowley. Mr. Crowley, could you wait till the microphone comes down? Thank you.
Hello. Tom Crowley, 7-seat Hill Road. Who is going to explain to us what Northland Residential is proposing and the details of that proposal?
I believe that-
I don't know if it's the Planning Board or who is it?
I believe that Ms. Hunter will be discussing that.
Are we going to have a similar video of what they're proposing?
Robin, are you going to have a similar diagram?
We hadn't planned to get into a lot of detail because it's a 40B development. What they're proposing still has to go through the comprehensive- What they're proposing still has to go through the comprehensive permit process in the town of Dover run by the Zoning Board of Appeals. On the website is the presentation that they gave way back in May that showed some of their plans.
I have seen the website, Boda. I'm curious why that information isn't available to this meeting because quite possibly not everybody has been on the website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowley. Any other questions?
Wait one second. Yeah, just one second.
Okay, gentlemen, way in the back.
I'm Fred Gernard.
Fred, I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic and stay here?
Fred Gernard, 17 Old Meadow. Has the planning board looked at any kind of road loop that involves the Powers property?
That was easy.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramsen. Next, Amy Moot, Chair of the Open Space Committee, will present the findings of the Open Space Committee. And again, I remind the speakers that we only have 10 minutes for each presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Moot. I'm the Chair of the Dover Open Space Committee, and I live on Glen Street. I'm going to speak tonight about we, why we, the Dover Open Space Committee, believe that Springdale Avenue, also known as Springdale Farm, is valuable open space and recreational asset for Dover, Dover as a community, and why we believe that controlling its future is extremely important for Dover. The Dover Open Space Committee unanimously recommends that you, as the townspeople of Dover, vote yes at this meeting and again at the election to acquire Springdale Avenue. The yes vote allows us, as the citizens of Dover, the control and the time to make orderly and prudent decisions about the future of the farm. Controlling the future of Springdale Farm allows the town to better protect the numerous conservation values that the farm offers, as well as preventing the adverse impact of the proposed dense 40 units of housing on the property. By acquiring the farm in the short term, we'd be in a position to better protect its several uncommon wildlife habitats, as well as safeguard the water quality and quantity from Spring Brook and defend our wetlands from contamination or damage from the density of a 40B development. In addition, we'd also be able to preserve and possibly even improve some of the passive recreational opportunities for Dover residents, also known as our trail network. The value, sorry, the value that the town will derive from controlling the property's future and the time to properly assess our options and not have a 120-day cap on it more than justifies the acquisition. The estimated cost of the short-term interest, as you'll hear from Robin later, is just a few dollars annually per family, and that's a small price to pay to have control of this special property. Whether we ultimately decide to keep it or sell all or part of it, as Jane has described, the point is, is that we get to decide what happens to it and not a 40B developer that's unconstrained by Dover's local regulations. Go back, sorry. The control process would allow us to protect the habitat for the diverse wildlife that rely on the uncommon features that you saw in Candace's great overview. Most importantly, the Dover Open Space Committee were very concerned about the flow in Spring Brook should the proposed development be built. Several of our committee members, lifelong and long-term residents of Dover, have noted the dramatic reduction in the flow in streams adjacent to developments. In addition, Colonial Water's wells on Knollwood, just upstream from the property, are very shallow, drawing water from 30-to-40-foot gravel wells. Spring Brook, which runs through the fields that you saw on the farm and comes out across Springdale Avenue, is mapped currently as a perennial stream, which means that it was flowing year-round when it was mapped. However, now a large segment which runs through the fields appears to be dry all or for a good part of the year. How much additional impact will the water draw to accommodate 40 new residences have on this brook? The negative impact to the wildlife from a reduction in the flow in Spring Brook is pretty obvious, but in addition to that, declines in the flow may impact the associated and downstream wetlands and ultimately, that ultimately flow into the Charles River. And we protect our wetlands currently for what's called their ecological services, things like cleaning and replenishing the groundwater, and therefore, they have impact, they provide services that impact the quality and quantity of water available for our wells. And as many of you know, you don't necessarily have to be what looks like downstream to be impacted by the water flow underground. Largely for this very reason, in Dover, we have additional wetlands bylaws to protect our wetlands and therefore our water supply. Unlike most of eastern Massachusetts, we rely on our wells and not piped municipal water. Under 40B, as you heard, developers get to ignore all of these local bylaws. So I've put together a few of the assessor's maps so you can see how important Springdale Farm is, not only to the trail networks, but also to the wild, in terms of the wildlife corridor that Candace referred to. Here, Springdale Farm is in red. The green are public accessible lands, Dover Land Trust lands, Army Corps of Engineers, and town wildwoods in the lower right. The town hall is in the upper, almost upper right, and Springdale Avenue is the horizontal blue line. Center Street is the right-hand downward blue line, and Farm Street is the one that goes from the top and curves down. So, in terms of recreational opportunities, trails, and in particular, long networks of trails are key, are key and increasingly unique asset for Dover. They enhance the experience of many residents, whether we're walking dogs, going for a run or riding our horses. It's why many of us come here to live, and it's a reason why our real estate is highly valued. And Springdale Farm, as you can see, is the last piece required to link our own wildwoods into the town center. The property fits really nicely into the Wildwood Center Street corridor trail system. So from the back of the fields, there's actually a trail that runs through Dover Land Trust land and into Wildwoods. In addition, with its access to Springdale Avenue, the property provides connections for even Wildwoods to Dover Land Trust's Springdale Field and further up Pegan Lane to the trustees' Pegan Hill Reservation. So Springdale Farm is really key to creating an almost continuous network of recreational trails that cross Dover, providing our residents with easy access to open spaces in Dover and to those in Westwood, Medfield, Natick, and beyond. By controlling the property and through an orderly process, we, as townspeople, would then be able to decide what the appropriate uses and access would be and the relative value to us of those options. In summary, I'd like to say the Open Space Committee truly recommends that you vote yes at this meeting and again at the election to acquire Springdale, 46 Springdale. Yes vote allows us, the citizens of Dover, to, the control and the time, to make a consider, to make considered decisions about the future of the property, and allows us at a future town meeting to make the right decision for the long-term on this property. A no vote at either the town meeting or the election will almost certainly result in 40 or more units of housing being built on this delicate and important landscape. In addition, the 40B developer, as you heard, can ignore almost all of Dover's own conservation, planning, and Board of Health bylaws. These bylaws protect our property values by protecting our particular needs, especially our need for fresh and plentiful well water, as well as our rural character and our trail network. We can't afford to lose control of the future of Springdale Farm, whether or not the town ultimately keeps all or part of the land. The two yes votes allow us, the citizens of Dover, to control and make the right decisions about the future of Springdale Farm. Please vote yes for both, at both the meeting, this meeting and at the election. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moot. Are there any questions for the Open Space Committee? Again, we'll have an opportunity to debate this after, but with respect to the factual representations, yes. Third row from the top. Thank you. Here comes a microphone over to you.
Hi, Debbie Shaw on Brookfield Road. You mentioned the water draw that would happen from the proposed development, that it might affect the Colonial Water wells. Do we know for a fact which, where the water would come from? It's very close to the other source.
Yes. The development would draw from Colonial. They've already stated they'd be hooking up to Colonial, so the draw would come directly from Colonial, and I believe that the Board of Health has a little bit more on the Colonial wells, but...
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Moot. Next, Dr. Barbara Ross-Shechter, of the Chair of the Board of Health, will present the report of the Board of Health. Yeah, you're really going to have to get very close to the microphone.
How about this? So anyhow, I am here to present to you the result of the discussion of the Board of Health concerning the proposal that was made for the 46 Springdale property. There are two major concerns that the Board of Health has, and they are very simply, the domestic water supply to 40-plus units and a septic system that has to serve 90-plus bedrooms. And I will take two seconds to just very generally outline the way, because it is important for our discussion, the way, excuse me, developer has planned to position the 40-plus houses, and that is in one giant circle around, and the center of the property is called common space, where a common septic system is supposed to be located. You have to appreciate that in order to understand what I'm talking about. So, back starts with the water. Domestic water is supposed to be supplied by the Dover Colonial Water Company. Now, Colonial Water has three shallow wells, Knollwood, Francis Street, and Draper Road. They are being pooled, and they are to supply the water for these 40-plus houses. The problem is, this water, in terms of its quality and quantity, we'll talk about in a second, are supervised by DEP under these circumstances, with only an annual report provided to the Board of Health. The Board of Health has no control over the quantity or the quality of water that is being pumped by Colonial Water. And the water rates are supervised by the Department of Public Utilities. Next, please. As far as DEP and Colonial Water Company analyses are concerned, presently, their functional output, that is to say, how much they actually use on a regular basis, amounts to 60% of their capacity, which you have to keep in mind, is DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, will intervene when the output reaches 75% or more of capacity. Now, the Board of Health has no reliable historical statistics of groundwater and springs, et cetera, of the targeted area specifically, or for that matter, of all of Dover. But the fact is, we do not really have any control, and we will not have any knowledge about what is going to happen there. That brings us to the septic system. As I said, the planned characteristics are that it's located in the center of the property, beneath the so-called common space. It's supposed to serve 90-plus bedrooms with a daily septic capacity of approximately 9,000 gallons per day. And according to Title V, at this point, we have not seen any plans and can't have any plans, but we are assuming that the initial application will be based on Title V to determine initially the perk rates and level to groundwater. However, in the evaluation of the Board of Health, it came to our attention that this entire area is located in a Zone 2, which is called nitrogen-sensitive. It is also DEP-defined, a protective zone of an environmentally sensitive nature. This is based on DEP topography, where there are hills and where there are aquifers and so on and so forth, and previous human activity on the site. Now, a location in a Zone 2 plus a flow rate of more than 2,000 gallons per day, and I remind you, this thing will be about 9,000 gallons per day, once again, location in this Zone 2 plus a flow rate of more than 2,000 gallons per day will require a groundwater mounting study. A definition of a groundwater mounting study is a computer modeling study indicating the likelihood of sewage breakout due to an unexpected rise in the water level below the leaching area with significant release of nitrogen. And nitrogen is an element that is very active and potentially dangerous. And therefore, the results from such a study will most likely, we cannot make any definitive prediction, but most likely, indicate the need of an enhanced sewage disposal system. And the characteristics overall of an enhanced sewage disposal system is that it fixates the nitrogen that is being released. It is consistent, generally speaking, of a large tank that will collect the solid material, and the liquid material on top will be passed through biofilters for biological treatment. So, the enhanced sewage disposal system would be an alternative and additional technology to decrease the nitrogen release in the area. Now, we have such a thing already in Dover, and that is a system, an enhanced sewage disposal system, that is being used by the Meadows, and they are using BioClear, that's just the name of it. But what it is, it is a DEP-supervised system. The Board of Health has influence, but it is a DEP-issued groundwater discharge permit. And this discharge permit obliges the person or the organization that uses this enhanced sewage disposal system to report a monthly monitoring report to the Board of Health and DEP. But we are just getting it for informational purposes. And I can assure you, some of the observations that we have seen in the Meadows BioClear reports are sometimes disquieting and require contact with DEP. And therefore, our conclusions have to be with the- And therefore, our conclusions have to be, with the presently available limited information, the Board of Health cannot predict feasibility and characteristics of an adequate septic system, or to make specific recommendations for its development. The same goes for the water situation, but the Board of Health recommends a complete hydrological study of Dover water resources and supply, because we have to be able to have at least some influence over DEP and not be entirely dependent upon them. And last but not least, the Board of Health would like to make the point that the ecological impact of this development may be significant. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Ross Schechter. Are there any questions for the Board of Health? Yes?
Yes.
Fourth row down. Wait for the microphone. Can I have a microphone here, please? Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Shaw, 35 Brookfield. You mentioned that the Colonial Water was at 60% capacity. Do you know how many homes that currently serves?
No, I do not know the number. They have recently expanded into certain areas in the downtown area. I cannot, I do not know the answer. I'm sorry.
Because 60% represents, we don't know how many homes, and so the extra 40, we don't know how much that adds to the total percent to increase it, whether it's gonna be closer to, you know, 40, I mean, 65% or 70%.
We did ask that question, although I regret it. I don't have a complete answer for you, but we did ask Colonial Water that question, as well as DEP, and both of them stated that those extra 40 households would not significantly change the 60% level.
I believe that, Doctor, that Mr. Dolly has an answer to that question. Mr. Dolly?
Yes, Colonial Water currently serves approximately 600 houses in the town.
600, so, that's a good, then you can calculate it out.
Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Clark.
Gerald Clark, Valley Road. As an intervenor in the original suit against the Dover Water Company, some many years ago, now known as Colonial, one of the facts that we were able to uncover was that the gravel pack wells, which are indeed shallow, 38 feet to be specific, at Knollwood, are independent. They are not part of an overall system, just as the Trout Brook is an independent system. And therefore, if you're speaking of 60% of the overall output of Colonial, that is actually very dependent upon Francis Pond, and avoids the question of what usage currently by the existing 28 homes on Knollwood Drive, make use of those gravel, that gravel pack well on Knollwood, and what would be the additional impact of 40 homes on that one well? This is not a consolidated water company or consolidated water system, as you know. So, the 60% overall average may well be the typical example that my head is in the oven and my feet are in the freezer, but overall, on average, I'm feeling very good.
That is very well said, except that now Colonial Water is actually pumping all three, Francis Street, Knollwood, and Draper Road, through a central well system.
Please, Mr. Clark, wait till the microphone comes back. Thank you.
Is that a recent development?
Relatively, yes, but I do not have a specific answer, because we wanted to know, in terms of their report to DEP, what do they do? Do they represent a mean of the three well data, or are they just a range? And that's how we found out, that they're actually combining the three wells. And the town of Dover is presently in the process of renegotiating a contract with Colonial Water Company. We do not know enough about them, the Board of Health believes.
Mr. Crowley?
Tom Crowley, City Hill Road. About 15 years ago, the Dover Water Company extended their transfer system to Knollwood. So, Knollwood is supplied by Colonial now, through that transfer system, and the Board of Selectmen allowed the Dover Water Company at that time to go through the center of town and expand and extend their transfer system. So, in fact, Knollwood now gets water from wherever, whether it's Francis Street or whatever additional wells they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Lady on the fourth row.
Chris Fleskus, High Rock Road. My question to you is, if you could clarify, my understanding is you're saying that the DPU is not going to sufficiently protect Dover groundwater if this 40B is developed?
No, DPU, they are just setting the price for the water. That is public utility management. It's DEP that will set the rules.
Excuse me, DEP.
Yes.
So you don't feel that they will do a sufficient job in protecting our groundwater?
I would not even imagine to make such a statement. It is something that we find disturbing, that we do not have any say at the local level over our local water supply, and it is exclusively regulated by the state DEP. And we have to assume, and I think everybody else is, it is a very capable organization. But that is not to say that it wouldn't be helpful if the local Board of Health had its input and some ability to evaluate what is being proposed by the DEP. And that is why the Board of Health felt rather strongly, we do need a hydrological study for the town of Dover, because the water level, the spring level, historically speaking, have decreased. They have gone down. But we don't have the statistics, and that is why we need a real study.
So, do you have any control over Dover, I was gonna say Dover Water Country, Company, because that's what it was, Colonial? Do you have, say, in Colonial Water's testing?
Nope.
No?
We are getting...
So, 600 residences, homes in Dover right now, are not, let's say, under your jurisdiction or not being controlled?
I do not want to create the impression that we don't know what's going on. We do get their yearly report, which they send to DEP, but we do not find that adequate, because, as I said, we're getting mean data, and we do have some wells, private wells, in the areas of Colonial Water Supply, where we know there is some contamination, which is probably from the salting during winter of the streets. That's not the point. The point is, we do not have, we feel, we do not have enough power about it.
But right now, you do not have power over these 600 homes, but you feel it's important that you have it over the 40?
Absolutely, we do not. We only get informed, and only on a yearly basis. But the Board of Selectmen are in the process of renegotiating the contract with Colonial Water Company.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Dr. Ross Schechter? Yes?
Hi, real quick, sorry. Amelia Slusby, Normandy Road. I was just curious, should the 40B development pass happen, the town does it buy the land, how would they tap into the water? Are they gonna be digging up Center Street, Springdale Avenue? I mean, how, what is the access point, should they get water?
We don't know that yet. It has not been submitted, and we don't know. That they will have to pass that by the Board of Selectmen, more than by the Board of Health, the path of how they go through, because when they dug recently to Comiskey Road, which they did, they had to go through the Board of Selectmen and not the Board of Health.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Ms. Repetti, may I expand on that just a bit?
Yes, Ms. Lisbon.
Thank you. So, the Colonial Water Company has on occasion come before the Board. Recently, they are providing the water for the expansion and development on Haven Terrace. Last year, they expanded their coverage on, right off of Dedham Street, by, behind the historical house. So, they have the legal right to do that. They do pay the town for when they dig up the road and it gets fixed.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, next, we have Robert Hunter from the Board of Selectmen.
Could I get one of those roaming mics?
Could we have a microphone down here, please? Right, right, right down here at the front. Thank you, all the way down. Thank you very much.
So, we've heard a lot of presentations tonight, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about how are we gonna pay for this. So, first of all, I think it's important to understand that the decision we're making this evening is an interim decision. If we vote yes this evening, we will be buying time, as a town, to decide what to do with the property. And as a result of that, we will not be permanently bonding the property. We will be using bands, which are bond anticipation notes. They are interest-only notes. We will hold an auction and enter into a 12-month note, and then we'll have the ability to renew for six months, three months, one month, depending on how the ad hoc committee is doing, and when we anticipate that they will bring recommendations to the town. We will, for these notes, there will be two portions, we'll split it into two, a taxable portion for the, for the part of the land where there is a house on it, and a non-taxable portion. The reason we're doing that is so that we have the opportunity, if we so desire, to rent the existing home, while we are trying to determine, as a town, what the best use of the land is for. The cost of these bands is minimal, because they're interest-only. The taxable portion will be about 60 basis points, while the tax exempt portion will be 25 basis points. The blended rate, or the blended interest on an annual basis, will be $19,000, or $7.30 per median household. Again, we will roll over the band. We do face some interest rate risk, so if the risk, if interest rates went up about one percentage point, the $7.30 would increase to $28.44 per household. We were asked the question, well, can we afford this? What does Dover's debt capacity look like? Where are we right now? If any of you recall the Blue Book, we have this mountain of debt. Well, our mountain of debt is declining, so we're on the back end of that. Currently, our principal and interest payments range at about $1.4 million, and they will be at about $900,000 in fiscal year 20. When we bring this debt on, which we would envision would happen sometime in fiscal year 2016, we, our total debt levels will be somewhere around $11.8 million. When we bonded chikering, we were closer to $20 million. So, this will not impact our AAA rating. We have talked to our financial advisors, and we did ask, you know, what is the town's capacity? And they said a $50 million building would also not impact our rating. But if it did, we would be looking at about 25 additional basis points on interest. Another question we frequently get, well, will our taxes be permanently increased? And in Dover, we have historically added debt as a debt exclusion. So what that means is, once we pay for the debt, you no longer pay for it. So, for example, Wildwoods, we bonded $3 million in March of 2001. That debt will be paid off in May of 2018. Currently, we're estimating, it's about $62 per median household, so when that debt is paid off, that will no longer be reflected on your property tax bill. Again, we wanted to demonstrate where we are with debt, and the blue debt is if we were to bond Springdale the full amount, the 5.55 million. Again, I, we wanna emphasize that tonight, we're giving ourselves the opportunity, as a town, each and every one of us, to decide what we wanna do with the land. We will put together an ad hoc committee. You heard the moderator request volunteers, if any of you have interests in what you would like this land to be. We would very much like for you to volunteer for these, this committee. We would like to get a broad representation of all citizens in the town of Dover. Our goal is to make recommendations at the May 2016 meeting. And we will include financial projections in, with those recommendations. Over the summer, not only have we been doing due diligence on 46 Springdale, but also the Warren Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and capital budgets have worked on a long-range planning model that we will begin to use, and we will run these projections with the recommendations through that, to see if the town can afford to purchase this land, or whatever the outcome might be. There have been many potential uses for this land. You know, I think the Planning Board presented some of them. All the committees have presented different uses for it. Some of them haven't been presented, such as a solar farm, playing fields, all of these options, and I'm sure there may be more, will be looked at by this ad hoc committee. We also could think of alternative development, such as maybe consider changing the bylaws to allow cluster housing, which would allow us to put houses on the land, but preserve the back acreage as open space. So there are many, many options for us to decide. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hunter. Are there any questions for the Board of Selectmen? Yes, gentlemen?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, we've heard excellent presentations on the cost to the town if the 40B development, sorry, George Estes, Hartford Street. We've heard about the cost to the town if the 40B development goes forward. I wonder if we could hear about tax revenues that the 40B development would produce for the town?
We certainly can. We did put together an estimate. As you can imagine, as the, as the property gets developed, but at its peak, when all of the 40 units are developed, there would be approximately $350,000 of additional revenue. If you ask about revenue, we also have to talk about, well, what would the additional costs be to the town? And, you know, from a infrastructure standpoint, such as police, fire, roads, those costs would be minimal. The big question mark is the schools. And we did try, and I worked with the superintendent of schools, to figure out, you know, what might be the additional cost to the schools. And it's a very difficult question to answer. There are a certain number of students that the schools could absorb at their current levels. However, we're not exactly sure of that number, and it also depends on the needs of the children. If we have a special needs case, that could cost us, just one case could cost close to $300,000. So, it's really hard to know without knowing what the population in that development may be. And I'm sure you're finding this answer as frustrating as I found it, when I had these discussions with the superintendent, but unfortunately, you know, we really can't give you a concrete answer.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Fleming? Ah, yes, Mr. Fleming. Could I have a microphone down in front here? Thank you.
What is the town's...
Sorry, Mr. Fleming, could you state your name and address? Thank you.
Jim Fleming, Fox Run Road. What's the town's unfunded liability for pensions and health insurance?
Mrs. Lisbon has that answer for you, Mr. Fleming.
Okay, Ms. Lisbon?
I'm so glad you asked us that question, Mr. Fleming, because I have an answer that should make all of us very, very proud. First, just to explain Mr. Fleming's question, OPEB, unfunded pension liability, is basically other post-employment benefits, OPEB. It's basically retiree healthcare and a little bit of retiree group life insurance. Since 2008, GASB 45 through the state has required that all the 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts report their OPEB costs and their liabilities. There was a silver lining to a very dark cloud back in 1990, when the town wells on Church Street were contaminated from the mobile gas station. The Selectmen, back in 2003, Tobe Deutschman, Kathy Weld, Charlie Hellwell, and then Dave Hyland, made a momentous decision to join a class action lawsuit nationally about MTBE contamination. The result was that in November of 2008, and then for about six months after that, we received over $2 million in a settlement. The Board, Board of Selectmen voted in 2009, and that was supported by all of you at the May, at the May 2009 town meeting, to take that over $2 million and use it to jumpstart the funding of OPEB. So, we are in a magnificent situation. Since 2009, the town has also voted every single annual town meeting, the first Monday of May, to fund the annual amount that our actuarial consultants tells us we need to, to fund to maintain our OPEB funding. So, as of June 30th, 2014, we had $3,568,983.21, which represents 59.2% of the, of our liability. I would hazard a guess to say that that puts us in the top four or five towns in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts as far as funding. There are many towns that have yet to start funding their OPEB liability. So, we're in great shape.
Please hold your applause until the meeting's over. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lisbon, and thank you, Mr. Fleming, for that question. Any other questions for Ms. Hunter? Yes, Mr. Crowley.
On our eight and a half million debt, what about the regional debt? Have you included that in the eight and a half?
No, we have not. The regional debt is included in the assessment to us, so it's not included.
What is the amount of the regional debt that we're obligated to?
Well, that, as, as you know, that formula changes based upon the enrollment in the schools. Off the top of my head, Mr. Bliss, perhaps you could tell me what, what that number is? I, I'm sorry, we don't have an answer of that exact number right now.
You can look what's due each year, and what we have to pay, and give us the number. But I have another question also.
Okay, Mr. Crowley.
What is the amount of the unfunded liabilities, the pension liabilities? You gave us the formula, but you didn't give us the amount.
Carol?
Okay, thank you. All right, add that, add the eight and a half, and then add the regional debt, and then you'll get a real number of what we owe. Thank you.
Does anybody have the numbers for the regional handy? No? Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hunter. Lastly, we will now hear from James Stewart, Chair of the Warren Committee, and he will present the Warren Committee's report. Can we bring a microphone down to the front again? Sorry to have you run back down here. Right up front, right at the very front here. Great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, first slide, please. The question, should the town acquire the Springdale property? The warrant committee has spent the summer performing extensive due diligence relating to the 46 Springdale property. We've reviewed and analyzed a lot of town reports, actually, everything that, that you've heard here discussed tonight, plus, we've also spent a lot of time talking to the town's administrator, treasurer, and financial advisors. We've endeavored to explore the pros and cons of all the aspects of such an acquisition. So, everything that, that you've heard tonight, plus some things that you probably haven't, haven't been mentioned. However, particular focus has been on the financial aspects to the town. And it's actually not detailed in these later slides. It was detailed in most of the slides that we've seen thus far. Both if the property is not acquired by the town, and if it is acquired by the town. And it's based on this analysis that the warrant committee's recommendations are primarily based. Next slide, please. The considerations. The warrant article number one provides for a special town meeting vote. The financing of the acquisition will be presented as a ballot item on November 4th, and the ballot item will determine whether or not to approve a debt exclusion. The ultimate usage or disposition, either in whole, in whole or in part of the property, if the town requires it, has not yet been determined. That's the role of the ad hoc committee. It is expected that the ultimate financing of the property by the town will reflect its use or disposition. So, whatever's decided, that's what the permanent financing will relate to. This recommendation should not be construed as a recommendation by the warrant committee as to the use or the ultimate disposition of the property. It's just, as it looks now, what are we considering? This presentation has changed from the presentation that we gave the Board of Selectmen's open hearing on September 3rd, to eliminate duplication of financial and other items. So, if anybody has a question. Next line, next slide. The analysis for Article One assumes that the town is going to acquire the property, which is the basis of the, of the article, and that the town finances the entire $5.5 million purchase through the use of bands for approximately two years, or, and that's sort of a worst case. After two years, the band borrowing presumably will roll into some sort of issuance of a 20-year general obligation bond, assuming, and that's just assuming sort of a conservative case. Next slide. The warrant committee, with our recommendation, recommends that Article One, the authorization for the purchase of 46 Springdale by the town, be approved. Next slide. And this is a summary of the recommendation rationale. In terms of financial aspects, we wanted to say that likely there is limited downside to the town financially by this purchase. That the, you've heard this before, the property acquisition will not negatively impact the town's ability to responsibly finance potential future capital needs and repairs to maintain the infrastructure at the schools and other town properties. And then, in terms of the non-financial aspects, we wanted to mention that it preserves flexibility over the use of a very highly visible property near the center of town, and it gives the town more time to consider and plan the use of the property at what is likely to be a moderate cost. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Are there any questions for the Chair of the Warren Committee? Okay, I don't see anybody. Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. Again, thank you to the town boards and the committees for all their hard work this summer. Now, we can open this up for general discussion. Please raise your hands so they may call upon you to present your questions or comments about the wisdom of adopting or rejecting the motion pertaining to the acquisition of the Snyder property. Yes, Mr. Glidden. Could I have a microphone up front, please? Thank you. All the way up, all the way up, right by the third row here. Thanks.
Thank you. My name's Pointon Glidden. I live on 55 Pine Street. And I think I have somewhat of a unique perspective on this, and I'm gonna address it to the water levels. I grew up on a tributary of Springbrook, and I've lit, and for the past 40 years, I've worked at 30 Springdale Avenue, which abuts the spring on Springbrook. Now, for the past many, many years, we have noticed that the tributaries of Springbrook are slowly drying up. There was a day, when I was a child, that you could catch trout up and down the two tributaries that run off Snow Hill and out of Hales Pond, between Pine and Walpole Street, and between Pine and Center Street. Sadly, those days are past. The tributary that is listed as perennial dries up between, for a period of time, between the railroad tracks and the spring itself. The property where I grew up, I had a, we had a well 40 foot deep, and it was sufficient to raise a family of five in the 1950s. My son now lives there, and he had to drill a new well, went down 698 feet. We moved over to Pine Street in 1957, my grandfather's place. His wells were also 46 feet, 40 feet deep. The well that my mom drilled in 1991 is 951 feet deep. So, I can say without a doubt the water level is slowly declining, and this is something that the Board of Health has recognized and has to study further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glidden. Are there any other questions or comments? Please hold your applause until the end of the evening, then we'll have plenty of time to clap. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Crowley.
Thank you. Tom Crowley, 7 Seed Hill Road. I would like you all to reflect upon the financials of what's going on here. We're being asked to spend $5 million, and we don't know what the final outcome or proposals might be made by the 25 people of this committee that's yet to be appointed. That's a big risk, in my opinion. I, they might come in and ask for another million dollars, or two. Who knows? There's no answer to that. I also have a question on the financing. One of the proposals here showed bands for one year, and the most recent proposal by the warrant committee showed bands for two years. Now, band and bond anticipation notes are a very low rate at the present time. But we're coming back two years from now to finance the $5 million. Can anybody tell me what the interest rates will be two years from now? I don't think so. They could be where they are now. They could be 4%. We don't know the cost, and that's a big risk. Maybe Janet Yellen can tell us. I look at the proposal as an opportunity to have senior housing. We have really not focused on that possibility for this town. We have 27 acres, 40 units, and actually, it's 17 structures. Most of the, most of the structures are two condominium structures. The balance of a few are three, to come up with 40. I think that leads you to two bedrooms in most of those units, and that 90 number presented by the Board of Health is probably accurate for bedrooms. But if you look at the existing 40Bs that we have, there are very few schoolchildren in those units. There might be more in 109, up there in 109 than there are in the Meadows and Dover Farms. The other thing I'm concerned with is, where are we going with senior housing? This is an opportunity to provide some. And there was a bylaw several years ago that provided for multifamily housing within a half mile of the town. And it was one of the sites that was considered when I was on the Planning Board, and we looked at putting on that restriction. And now, we're ignoring it. And I, I think that's a fatal mistake. There are too many, too many questions about the finances. We're not getting, we don't know what the debt is for the regional school. We don't know exactly what the unfunded liabilities are. Is the MBTA included in that number? I had heard years ago that it was up to $30 million. So, really, what is it? 40B has a dirty word connotation, and I don't buy that any longer. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Hunter, did you want to respond?
Mr. Crowley, the regional school debt, Dover's share of it is approximately $6 million.
Can I speak into the microphone, please?
Also, as part of our presentation, you know, one of the risks is interest rate risk, which is why we want to bring to the town in May of 2016, recommendations. We did try and provide a sensitivity analysis, and I don't have a crystal ball, and if I did, I would be a very wealthy woman. But, you know, if you increase the rates by approximately 1%, we did show how much that would increase the ban. Also, with respect to bands, the maximum amount of time you can have a ban for is 12 months, and then it does give you the flexibility to roll it over for one month, three months, or six months. At this juncture, hopefully, it will only be 18 months. And we also have no idea what the ultimate cost may be with respect to this piece of land.
Ms. Hunter, you prefaced your remarks by a reference to the regional debt. Could you repeat that, because I don't think we heard you?
The Dover's share of the regional debt currently is approximately $6 million.
Okay, thank you.
It's 55% of the total debt.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the front here, five rows back, could I have a microphone down here? Keep walking down. Could you stand up, sir, so he'll be able to see you more easily? Thank you.
My name is Kevin Ban, 7 Pleasant Street. I'd like to move the vote.
Okay, a motion has been made to move the vote. This is a two-thirds vote. It is not debatable, and it will have to be seconded. Do I hear a second? Please don't shout it out. Gentlemen in the front, sir, could you stand and bring them, we'll bring a microphone up to Mr. Cabot. Mr. Elliott, I mean, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, could you state your name and address, sir? State... Thank you, sorry.
Chris Cutler, 3 Riga Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cutler, sorry. Okay, so we have a motion to moving the question. We have a second. This is not debatable. It is a two-thirds vote. All in favor of moving the question to a vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, actually, it'd be nay. I believe that two-thirds carries the motion. Time is 9:03, 9:02. Okay, so we're going to move it to a vote. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this will be a standing vote. So, I'll first ask all those in favor to stand, and then after you're counted, the counters will tell you whether you can sit, or if they don't tell you, I'll tell you at the end of the count. And then I'll ask those opposed to stand, and there'll be a similar counting process. All those in favor of the motion, please stand to be counted. May they be seated? Okay, the votes, the vote tally is those in favor of the motion, 445, those opposed, 16. Okay, we will now move to Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $25,000 be appropriated by transfer from free cash to fund an ad hoc committee to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to study the possible uses for the Snyder property if such property is acquired by the town pursuant to Article One.
Thank you, Mr. Forte. Second?
Mr. Moderator, a second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. There are only two boards reporting on this motion, so I would like to call on them to issue their reports, and then we will open it up for discussion. Please remember that a motion for reconsideration can be made with respect to the earlier motions. Those of us who have been going to town meetings for a long time know that it has happened quite frequently in the past, so I encourage you to wait until we've considered this article, and then we have dissolved the meeting. The first board that will make the presentation, Robin Heiner, from the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Hunter?
I'm going to do the presentation from here. So the question at hand is, what do we need $25,000 for? And as you know, as I mentioned in my previous presentation, we're going to have this ad hoc committee who's going to explore various options for the land, and we thought it would be appropriate to appropriate a sum of money in the event that this committee needed a certain expertise that was not available from the members of the committee. We're on Slide Two. As many of you may know, municipal accounting is cash-based, so you have to have funds for any money spent, and this is basically an insurance policy so that we can make sure that the studies continue and aren't delayed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunter. Next, James Stewart from the Warrant Committee will present the Warrant Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First slide, please. Well...
Bill, you might want to uncover the projector.
Next slide, please. So for Article Two, the funding of an ad hoc committee to study the future uses of the 46 Springdale property, again, the Warrant Committee analysis assumes that the town acquires the property. Next slide. And in terms of the recommendation, the Warrant Committee recommends that Article Two, the funding of the amount of $25,000 for an ad hoc committee to study potential uses of this 46 Springdale property, be approved. And next slide. And the rationale, again, the funds will be useful in providing the ad hoc committee with resources to help recommend the use or uses of the property, and the amount requested seems appropriate, given the aspects of the transaction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart. This is a majority vote. Are there any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, none being heard. We'll move to a vote, again, a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We now move to the last motion for the meeting. Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.
Right here, a second?
Second.
Mr. Lawrence has second. A motion to dissolve the meeting, it's a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for attending tonight. Travel home safely, and don't forget that the town election is Tuesday, November 4th. Thank you.
No, my dad's here.
Hot up here.